Okay, we'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Dan?
Mayor Scoog?
President?
Vice Mayor Nei?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Oh, my God.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, move on to number three. Discussion of Proposed Fiscal Year 2018-19 Budget. For discussion only. And I guess we go straight to a Human Resources. Page 675, Karen Smith and Barbara Lear. Your ladies are up. Barbara is first. Barbara, you are up. Is that what we do?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This is my annual review of our employee benefits plans, which renew on July 1 each year. I've given you my written report, as usual. And let's turn to the background first. A few things that I want to emphasize this year. You'll notice that, of course, we always talk about the fact that we've had many, many years of zero increases, which, of course, is wonderful. But actually, it's been 11 years now since any kind of what I would consider realistic rate increase has been passed on to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield. So needless to say, we have been overdue. I'd like to again hone in on the last three years. In 2015, we did end up with an 8.8% final renewal after negotiations. We had large, high-cost claims that year of over $1 million. And those are claims, remember, that are defined after discounts, medical provider discounts, at $30,000 or more paid by the insurance company. So over $1 million in high-cost claims alone, you know, is quite excessive. That number had doubled from 2014, the year before. We did end up with 4.8%, and that did include, excuse me, 8.8%, but that did include 4.8% in the Obamacare ACA taxes and fees that were levied that year. Then in 2016, my goal was to somehow erase that increase, which I accomplished very close to that, minus 7.6%. So we basically took that money back from Blue Cross. We did have even claims that year, and frankly, I took advantage of that, knowing it was temporary. Then, last year, we ended up with only 2%, and that included 1.5% for the ACA taxes again. We had, again, in excess of $1 million in those same high-cost claims last year. The reason we got away with the 2% last year is because almost $400,000 of those high-cost claims last year were considered shock-loss claims because they exceeded the $100,000 stop loss that's built into our contract. So therefore, they were insured by the reinsurance, and they did not count towards our claims experience. So in essence, the net result was a reduction of our claims experience. So again, we ended up with only 2%. Now, before I go any further about the actual renewal components this year, I do want to mention a few other points. As this year continued, that is, the year of 2017, the last four months of 2017, our paid claims, not only our high-cost claims, but our overall utilization broke all records. Now, I've been your broker for 36 years, and our claims broke all records that I have seen. Okay? And again, that's overall utilization as well as high-cost claims. Many, many surgeries. We had $1.4 million in the last four months of large claims, and that was after discounts. And the Blue Cross discounts average around 49% off retail. And that's very consistent. So we averaged $273,000 of claims each of those last four months. I knew we were in trouble. At that point, and that was in December, when our calendar year ended, with the December month, I knew based on my analysis of the underwriting formulas that I know, and our claims experience, that we were looking at a renewal increase of mid-to-high 20%. Very realistic, very justified with our claims experience this past year. So at that point, I actually asked for a proposal from United Healthcare. I submitted three years of claims data, recognizing that that data then would be the same data that would be used, you know, for our Blue Cross renewal. I thought maybe also that I could use that proposal as a negotiation tool with Blue Cross. Didn't work out that way. The United Healthcare quote came in at a 26% rate increase over our current rates. But that gave me a very realistic benchmark from another insurance company. So I used that going forward, you know, again, not never letting Blue Cross know that it was a 26% rate increase. But nevertheless, it gave me some comfort in recognizing that that was the justified increase based on our actual claims experience this year. So then, going forward then, if you would look on, at the next page, the actual renewal components this year. Each year, annual medical inflationary trend runs, in past years, high in the teens. This year, a little over 9%. Our claims experience is considered 100% credible, and that's based on the size of our group and the number of years that we've been with Blue Cross. That's based on, in this case, 505 employees and dependents. That's 220 single employees, by the way. And then we have lots of family members on our plan. Our loss ratio then of paid claims to paid premium this year, a whopping 95%. Target loss ratio, 75%. So there we are, 20% over-target loss ratio on the claims alone. Okay? When you add run-out claims, the claims that the insurance company projects that haven't hit the books of the insurance company yet, then you're way over 100% paid loss ratio. This year, we had a total of 19 of those large, high-cost claims over $30,000 that I mentioned, and they ranged from $30,000 to about $150,000. Those high-cost claims, a little over $1 million, $1,888, again, after discounts. And then remembering that Blue Cross takes our claims experience from the previous 12 months and uses that as part of a weighted formula for our renewal. Last year's paid claims then were 10 large claims, again, close to $1 million, $989,000. And they were part of this year's calculation. So, you know, as I've just reviewed, our claims have continued to increase in the last four years. Overall utilization, amount of claims, again, while our renewals obviously have been significantly reduced by negotiation. So I said we're about 11 to 12 years overdue for what I call a rate correction. And my definition of a rate correction is 20% or more. Our demographics continue to be very much the same. 86 employees over age 50, which represents 39% of our total population. As you can see, 18 over 50 to 54, 34 accordingly, and 34 over age 60. Our COBRA participants this year doubled to six, and we did have some of those high-cost claims come from the COBRA participants. Of course, those are folks with some health problems that are going to stay on the plan because they have to, because of those health issues. Again, healthcare reform legislation still exists as far as the taxes and fees are concerned, although they've been reduced somewhat. Our final renewal this year still includes 1.5% for those taxes and fees. So looking at my actual negotiations this year, as you can see, we started out very, very close to the United Healthcare 26%, not coincidentally. 27.2%. As you can see, the steps that it took slowly, very slowly this year. It took 2.5 months of negotiation to get us where we are on this year's renewal from beginning to end. 11.1% in a rate increase. And then, because my personal goal was to try to get us to 10%, I thought that was more than realistic, given the data, I finally negotiated a one-time premium credit on our July 1 bill. So that $20,000 reduces the actual cost to the town of the 10%. So we were, I was able to meet the 10% personal goal. From the time that we started out to where we ended up, we're actually saving about $360,000, which is about 27%. So that's, you know, a lot of town dollars. And I feel, you know, when I finish each renewal each year, I have to feel like it was absolutely the best we could get, no matter what. And I guarantee you, the 10% was the best. Recognizing as well, okay, that I never ask for alternate quotes to change our benefits. You know, we are very benefit-sensitive. We have been for as long as I've known everyone here. And, you know, if the day comes and we have to go to a higher deductible, you know, and higher co-pays, so be it. But until that time, we want to try to maintain the highest level of benefits possible. So these renewals, you know, are really for all of our current benefits. As a matter of fact, this year, Blue Cross is including virtual healthcare, which I'm sure that you've seen the ads on TV, you know. So now for a $10 co-pay, you can call, and it is from your computer, from your iPad, from your PC, and you will have a virtual visit from a physician, as well as counseling for a $20 co-pay. So that's a real plus, I think. And that will start July 1. So that's also included in this renewal. Again, recognizing our health insurance rate history. 12-year average for final renewals, 1.7%. 5-year average, 2.8%. And then the last 3-year average, again, this is all including this 10% increase, we're at 1.8, still pretty unbeatable as far as the long term is concerned. And then, the original renewals prior to final negotiations averaged, for that same period of time, close to 16% per year, which, again, used to be, you know, the common annual trend amount, you know, in the low to mid-teens. But it has been reduced. Any questions about the health insurance renewal before we go on to the dental?
Questions, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. One was, I'm kind of agreeing with you, or I think everybody's looking at these traditional increases as just going up, up, and up, regardless of what our claim history is. And you'd mentioned that some of that was due primarily this year for surgeries? Or not necessarily?
Yes. Well, you know, they are included in the large, high-cost claims, Mike. You know, over $30,000. And we, you know, looking at the data and studying it, as I do, you know, every year, and then I look at it, you know, for the last five years to try to make some comparisons. And yes, we had a surge in the actual number of surgeries this year. But again, you know, we've had a lot of serious diagnoses. We have the plan, you know, to have the employees use it. And this year, they used it, as they should be doing.
So this is not necessarily falling on one department versus another in terms of our high claims?
No, not at all. No, there's no pattern there at all. And actually, two of the large claims, as I mentioned, were COBRA participants that had been terminated, you know, from the group, but had stayed on the plan, and rightfully so. That's what COBRA is there for, you know, and they're paying the premium, so.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to our dental. I am really happy to tell you that this is the third year that we've been discussing changing our dental plan. Not from Ameritas, because we've been very happy with that company for many, many years. But I felt it was time, we actually discussed it three years ago, that we moved into what I consider a managed care dental plan. The dental plan that we have had for 17 years, you know, allows employees to go to any dentist of their choice. So there is no such thing as an in-and-out-of-network benefit, whether it be an incentive benefit or a disincentive benefit. Okay? So this year, my task was, again, my goal was, to try to reduce the rates, if at all possible, or at least come out even, and increase the dental benefits, recognizing that there are two areas where employees feel that the dental has been lacking. And that is the maximum amount of benefits paid per year and the eyewear benefit. And those are the two things that I concentrated on. And I am so happy to tell you that our initial renewal increase, as you can see there, was close to 5%. And that was based on our claims experience for the last year for our current dental plan. So I started with that. I ended up with a minus 2%. And we have improved the dental plan and moved into a PPO dental plan. I've increased the annual benefit maximum from $1,000 to $1,500. That is in-network. So if employees choose, and the key word there is it's still a total choice. If they choose to use a participating in-network dentist, their maximum benefits per calendar year are going to be increased by basically 30% from $1,000 to $1,500 a year. Okay? But at the same time, because we're rolling into a different kind of plan, and I recognize our sensitivity to benefit changes, I designed the plan so that the out-of-network benefits are exactly the same as we've had. So there's no employee that's going to lose anything. They're only going to gain. And they're going to gain by using the incentive plan in-network with the higher level of benefits. Whereas, you know, when you think about it, our Blue Cross plan works a little bit more stringently. You know, you have incentive, better benefits in-network, but then you also have a benefit disincentive out-of-network. Okay? But since we're rolling into this, again, no employee is going to have really any disincentive. We can create a disincentive in the future, and I always like to have a plan rolling forward. So, you know, but right now, this works beautifully, smoothly, with no interruption, basically, of benefits. And they can increase their benefits, you know, if they choose to go to a participating dentist. And many employees are already going to participating dentists, you know, without probably even having made that choice or knowing it. So again, the goal is to take advantage of the in-network provider discounts that have been pre-negotiated, which, again, will help our claims experience in the long term. So that's the goal. And then the eyewear benefit was the other benefit that was a bit lacking. We only had $100 a year, and it's kind of like a spending account. It's a separate little spending account. And I was able to increase that to $150. So that's in and out. There's no such thing as, you know, an in-network versus out-of-network provider for the eye care. But a lot of people do use the eye care here. As a matter of fact, the utilization of the eye care benefit for our employees is about double the norm that Ameritas usually sees. So it's a valuable benefit for our employees. And also, there's, I included what we call incentive co-insurance. And that means that if an employee between, and there's an added bonus, this new dental plan is going into effect July 1. From July 1 to December 31, so for the last six months of 2018, if an employee submits only one dental claim, it can be a cleaning, it can be any kind of dental claim. Okay? Between now and the end of 2018, type 2 expenses, which are the most common, the fillings, the cleanings, you know, the things that people use the most, that is normally an 80% co-insurance. It's going to be increased to 90%. So it's an incentive co-insurance benefit. Okay? So as of January 1 then, with just one claim in the last six months of the year, our employees are going to already have a 90% benefit in-network. In-network, so there's a true incentive. Okay? So again, a little bit of a bonus this year because of, because, you know, it's being prorated and the plan is starting in the middle of the year. Okay? Our 10-year average increase, you can see, 2% on our dental, and our 5-year average increase, only 1%. And dental inflationary trend, annual trend, about 8.2% for Ameritas for 2018. So again, we've really won on this dental plan. We've got a better dental plan and less cost to the employees, less out-of-pocket cost to the town and to the employees. Questions about the dental plan?
Questions, anyone? I think not, Barbara. You've done a good job.
Thank you. And then, just last but not least, our term group life insurance. I was able to get that rate guarantee extended again for another two years until 7/1 of 2020. And then, our overview of the town's annual cost for everything that we've talked about, everything included in our employee benefit plans. So that is the rate increase on the health, the rate decrease on the dental, and not only the group life, the UNOM LTD and STD. I was able to get all of those coverages extended, same rates till 2020. So there's zero increase there. So the annual increase for all of our employees, for all of the benefits, is a little over $200,000 a year. And again, recognizing that that's really the first real rate increase we've seen in about 11 years. I want to also say that Karen and Larry have recently, just last week, gone around to all of the employees and let them know, you know, the increase and everything. And Karen has shared with me that they were quite relieved with the amount of increase. Any other questions?
Questions, anyone?
I only have one other comment. I'm sorry.
Go make your comment.
Karen and Ryan asked me to intervene on the town's behalf to try to get Blue Cross to help sponsor our 40th celebration. And I'm happy to announce that they came through with $5,000, which is the amount that they gave us back in 2012 for our last major celebration. So some good news there.
You have any comments? Let's start with Laura first.
I want to thank you for last year, preparing us for what we might and did here this year. And I can't imagine sitting here with anyone else telling us all of this. Thank you, because I don't think it's just a job for you, Barbara. I think it's very personal for you. And I think we all acknowledge that, but it's important for us to say that to you. So thank you that we're just not another customer.
That is a true statement, Laura Lee. Thank you very much. I do, maybe too personally, but, you know, it is what it is.
Mary?
I just wanted to say the same thing. You always do a great job every year. And you can see, when you come up here and tell us about all of the things, how much of heart you put into this for the betterment of these employees. I mean, it is truly felt, and thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for those. Those comments mean a lot to me. They really do. Thank you.
And speaking of the $5,000 donation, Jodi, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We have also counsel and mayor, a check from Barbara's company personally, along with, on top of the $5,000. And I just want to acknowledge that. She brought us in, and I am going to say the amount, Barbara. I'm sorry. Can we do that?
Okay.
$2,500 on top of that for the 40th anniversary, which is so appreciated. Thank you. You know, you are appreciated here. I remember last year with your presentation as well, and how prepared you are, how you go over the numbers. You just, you know, you remind me, you could just stretch it all out as best as possible, and you do that, such a great model in that. And you know, one thing I really like, too, she always makes the print nice and large. I love that.
Do you know where that came from? I used to use an overhead. Okay? Everybody would make fun of me, but I had the overhead. Okay? And, you know, I needed it to be large. And I never changed the format. I thought, oh, well, you know, let's just do it that way. But you're right, I kind of live it, you know. I've been doing this for a long time, so it just becomes part of your life.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, Karen?
Yeah, just a few more comments. I won't take a lot of your time. But in conjunction with what Barb was discussing with us, we are having open enrollment right at this time. Employees have through the end of May, May 31, to get any changes that they want in their benefits. And so in conjunction with that, we have our annual health fare. It's May 17 that you've probably seen information being distributed about. What is different this year is we actually are going to have Ameritas in this room offering sessions in front and behind the health fare so employees can come and hear those new incentives in more detail. They heard it at our meetings with Larry and myself, but it gives them another opportunity to rehear that information and how they can make the plan work to their benefit. So that'll be happening. In the budget book, I am on page 6-76. I thought I would just highlight a few of the objectives that we're wanting to accomplish next year in human resources for you and for the town. Within that section, a couple of things that, just to point out, that are new. A goal that has been there since, for me, for the last several years, we're going to accomplish this next year. And that will be at the end of December to get total reward letters out to all of our employees. We've never done that before. I will want to make it an annual event each December where they'll actually get an individualized letter that will give them that breakdown and recap of salary versus benefits so that that they can truly appreciate what their employer does for them, not only in their paycheck that they see in the bank, in the checking account, but also with those benefits. You know, when we were at our meetings this last couple, last week, with Larry and I out in the departments, I made sure that they heard, you know, the $1,500 a month that is spent for family coverage, for employee and family coverage. And, well, a lot of eyes opened really wide. They don't really think always about that additional. So, we're going to incorporate total reward letters this December and annually thereafter going forward. We're also going to continue to work at our exit interview process. We've discussed this before in some of our retreat meetings, about, okay, X number are leaving us, what that turnover number is, but really, let's break it down, and what does it mean, and how can we tackle it better? So, we're going to continue that effort by looking at our exit interview questionnaire and process, so we can maybe glean a little bit cleaner data to report it more concisely going forward. There are three bullet points in there that are all about training. I feel that that's a big component to show value to our employees and to help with their growth and development in the organization. So, we do have our annual leadership academy that we're going to continue to accomplish. A, a goal is to offer stay interviews to our supervisors and help them have those conversations with employees before they even think about leaving us. If this is our bi-annual year to do sexual harassment training, and so, we're having an employment attorney come. And she's a phenomenal speaker. I've heard her at the state level multiple times. So, she'll be very engaging with our employees this year for that training opportunity. And then, I've already done some work with our administrative supervisors throughout the organization to talk about what are our training needs for our administrative support staff. We've had that leadership training, but let's make sure that we're also looking at the, the other end of our organization, and how are we helping our entry-level staff grow and develop in their skill sets within the organization and beyond. So, those are some things. At last, one of the bullet points talks about drug and alcohol policy updates. And I'll be bringing those to you May the 10th. We'll talk about them more at that point. But then, in July, we'll be offering training to all of our supervisors on how to identify and address any drug or alcohol issues and abuse that we might have for employees, that we can offer them assistance timely instead of before it becomes a performance issue for them. All right. And then, as far as dollars, I was told by our town manager that it was a zero increase this year. So, it's kind of boring, right? There's not much to accomplish. If you go over to page 681, you'll see our, the total operating expenditures were 106 and going to 116. So, there's a $10,000 increase, and that $10,000 is all for the gala. So, that, outside of that, my budget is flat. And we'll plan for that for next year and have another wonderful event to be able to share with employees and council appreciation for them. Any questions or comments?
Laura?
I do. In your objectives, you mentioned medical marijuana regulation changes. Could you tell us a little bit about what those are?
Yeah, well, the main concern was in regards to, and we did a lot of work with the legal department to understand how this is impacting us with our federal grants that we have. And we certainly know that police officers, regardless of the Arizona State statutes, aren't able to possess or consume medical marijuana. But the broader scope came about when we were using LexiPole and their templates for some changes in the police department at the department level in their procedures. And that was being suggested for all employees throughout the department because of that component regarding federal grants. And so, we did a lot of research on, well, does that mean that's true for every employee, then, in the organization? Because we, as an organization, manage federal grants and have federal grants in-house. And ultimately, it was determined that that is not the case. But we wanted to be able to split the two apart and to better be able to define that into our policies. And we have not updated our drug and alcohol policies in over 10 years. And so, we know that there's been changes. There was also a change with CDL requirements in random testing, that there are additional drugs now that were required to test. And so, I wanted to incorporate that as well into our, our policies. So, that's what those are going to look like on May the 10th, when I bring them to you.
Thank you, Karen.
But any other, Mary, Mary, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Mike?
I was just wondering, do you, do we do the drug testing in-house, or is that sent out?
Yeah, no, we, we send it out. In fact, we have a vendor that helps us with our, our random pulling, too. We are such a small organization that we're part of a collective pool, so that they're drawing those randoms amongst their customers in that pool for us. And then Bradshaw does the testing for us. The training that we'll do in July with the supervisors, though, is more about reasonable suspicion and being able to identify the signs with that and how to address that.
Other questions? Anyone? Karen, you're doing a good job as usual.
Thank you. It's my pleasure and privilege. I appreciate it.
You and Barbara, what a team.
Good team, huh? That's right. Thank you.
We sure appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, we move on to number C.
B.
B, I'm sorry. B, which is library. Casey, you are up.
There we go. A little tall, I got some heels on today, so.
That's on page 6123.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As Karen has said, my budget is just as flat as hers, but I would like to touch on some objectives. We received some great news yesterday from the State Library. We received $37,000 in Library State Technology Act funding grants. So, one of the objectives that I had for the coming up 18, 19 budget year was to do a community assessment plan, so we could write our strategic plan. So, $30,000 of that grant will go towards us talking to our community, going out and finding what they want from us. And once we gather that data, this is going to be a year-long process, and then we can start writing our strategic plan, and we will have a path on what our community wants from us, and we will move forward with that. So, that was huge. So, the other grants, the other two grants we received was Gateway to Citizenship. We were awarded $4,000. That was one of the other objectives for 2018, 19, was to secure grant funding for citizenship classes, so check that off. The other one we received was Make It at PVPL, which is a STEAM, a Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics grant. We received $3,000 for that. So, that's an opportunity for our youth to participate in the STEAM portion. And so, we're very excited about those, those objectives. Some of the other objectives, of course, that I really developed in the budget this, for the upcoming year, is to have continuing education and professional development for staff. I believe that is very important. A better educated staff makes benefits to the community. So, that was a huge thing for me to do, is make sure that we have funding to educate our staff. The other capital improvement fund, we get to redo our parking lot. I'm so excited. So, that's my only capital improvement fund that was, was okay, so. And that's really all I have. Any questions?
Laura?
I don't have a question, but Jody and I had a very nice experience last night with a young man. Don't have information to give his name, having to do with his excitement to fit, to check out the Wi-Fi hotspots.
Oh, yes.
I am so delighted that this is taking off. So, I know it's kind of new, and I know a lot of people don't even know what it's about. So, since we're on television.
Yes.
Tell us what it's about.
So, that was, that was part of, and, and we can check that off, off our objectives, too, is we received the funding for Wi-Fi hotspots. We received just over $4,200 from the state with a grant to lend out free Wi-Fi hotspots. We received funds for 23 Wi-Fi hotspots, so the community can come in, check out a Wi-Fi hotspot with their library card. If they don't have a library card, they can come in and get one. We just need to see photo ID and something with current address. And they can check out the Wi-Fi hotspot for four weeks. And I think it can have up to 15 people on this device.
What is a Wi-Fi hotspot?
Wi-Fi hotspot allows you to have internet at home in your house. So, you can take this little box, go home and connect your computer, your devices, anything to it, and it's free internet, it's a free internet connection. There's no limit with the data. I mean, it's, it's, the sky's the limit with the data right now. So, yeah, it's a great opportunity, and again, it's free.
Is it mostly young people and teenagers checking this out, or are you seeing it spectrum use?
We're actually seeing a lot of older adults checking, checking out these devices. I haven't seen, I had a, a couple come in, they were looking for jobs, and they don't have, they don't have a job, so they just can't afford Wi-Fi. So, they were very excited that they could take, take this home and look for jobs, take their time, print, you know, filling out the online job applications. But there really is, we've also, I think we've had a couple of young families who have checked out the spots, too. So, it's a really great program.
Oh, they find older. Jody?
I'm so excited to hear about that as well. And Casey, is there a limit to where it will work? I mean, with, is it within the town limits, or can it be anywhere?
Um, as with any device, you know, just there, there might be areas that might not be as dependable on getting reliable internet. But we went with T-Mobile, which seems to work the best in, in our rural area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, Marty?
Yeah, just following up on, on what they've been saying. I think it's a great program. When I read the email, I thought it was awesome. How frequently can someone take out this hotspot?
Um, we have, at, at this point, it's a four-week checkout period. There is no renewals if there are holds. So, if there are no holds on the device, you can renew it for an additional four weeks. So, you could, you know, pretty much have it up to two months, two to three months.
Wow.
If there's not a demand.
And how many hotspots do you have?
We have 23.
That's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Casey, I think you're doing a good job. Thank you. Okay, with that, we move on then to number C, Parks and Recreation, page 683. Brian, you are up. And what have you been doing, Brian?
He lives. Look at that.
Well, I was reminded again to not sass the wife and understand my position, so that's what occurred. And I appreciated that reminder. No.
One injury too late.
On whose behalf? Well, good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for the time this evening, to be able to speak with you as it regards to Parks and Recreation's budget for fiscal year 18, 19. Before we begin to review some of our accomplishments from the previous fiscal year, we hosted a number of different tournaments throughout the calendar period, both with the city of Prescott and some of our other youth organizations. But proudly, we were also able to support the National Junior College Men's National Championships here in Prescott Valley. This was our second time, and the accolades still just keep rolling in in regards to the experience that they were able to have with us by all the participants. So, it was very exciting. It was a pleasure working with Mr. Clifford from Yavapai College and supporting that, as well as Coach Pans Leone. So, we're very happy about that and look forward to future opportunities to, to work in partnership with them and the other community members that came to partner in the program. In addition to that, we replaced quite a bit of trail signage, as well as then also working with the Over the Hill Gang, the Friends of Prescott Valley Parks and Recreation, to receive a community foundation grant for some work in a low-water crossing over at Fane Park, to work in conjunction with our trail programs. We're able to do a number of different parking lot upgrades in our park system at Tonto, American Legion, and Fane. We also received the Arizona Commission on the Arts Grants for some special events. A forestry grant was also received this year, in addition to a 40th anniversary tree that came from the Arbor Day Foundation, and doing that for our efforts in our Tree City USA program. So, those were some very nice things that we were able to do. We were able to complete all of the scheduled capital projects to 100% and improve our user experiences. So, thank you very much for that support. And we received nearly $140,000 in contributions in-kind materials and service and volunteer support throughout the year. So, your community is very invested in what you provide here with Parks and Recreation. So, we're very thankful for that, especially as we're serving 275,000-plus active participants, known scheduled participants in our activities and park systems, so, in doing those things. But to really hit the nail on the head, we were the recipient from the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association, the Natural Resource of the Year Award for our efforts on Glassford Hill and Summit Trail. So, thank you for that support, as recognized throughout the state this year, so, in doing that. So, now, let's go ahead and jump into some 2018, 2019 budget planning. As you heard from the colleagues both last night, and continuing a theme throughout this evening, we are operating on a flat budget. You are seeing some increases, though, and they are coming in the following ways. In our administrative division, you're seeing a $6,000 intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Department, as well as $50,000 for the department's master plan. That'll be phase one of two in that phase strategy. I'll be working towards that. In our park maintenance budget, you'll be seeing an increase of $137,000. That's for landscape maintenance of our master planned community parks that are within the town's auspices. In our special events division, you'll see a $50,000 budgetary allowance. That will be for 40th anniversary efforts. But you will also see the removal of our ICE and Events Center budget from Parks and Recreation. And that's due to the transfer and the development that's going on over at the Event Center right now. So, those are the big changes as far as operating budgets go for Parks and Recreation. Beyond that, we're really focusing on technology, and that's where the department's very excited. In administration, we're seeing a 600, or $6,500 allowance given to administration for a new copier. Under capital equipment, community and outdoor recreation, we'll see a new volleyball system that's going to be added to the new gymnasium and the Boys and Girls Club development that you'll be seeing in Mountain Valley Park. In park maintenance, you'll see a new athletic field painter, an athletic groomer, some playground equipment over in Quailwood. That's going to be a upgrade and replacement. A utility tractor, scoreboards to continue out the remainder of the fourplex there at Mountain Valley Park. A payment for the Summit Trail connector to the Prescott Trail system up on Glassford Hill. That would be the Arizona State Land Department. And then, also improvements. I know Casey was quite excited about her parking lot improvements. We're going to be doing the same out at Mountain Valley Park. And then, in our impact fees, we're going to be seeing some improvements. I know it's noted in the budget book as Granville Park. It's actually the new unit of development at the intersection of Granville and Santa Fe Loop, not the existing Granville Park. But we're going to be looking at, just due to development costs that the Granville developer is seeing, we're going to come back into that site after he is completed. And we're looking at a new playground, new Ramada, and as well, a pickleball court system. That's all part of that original design that we had out there. And then, at Grand, or at George Anderson Park, we're looking for new playground development. And then, at Mountain Valley Park, we're also looking at a very substantial improvement in our playground system out there. And that's just simply because that park serves so highly in a regional and throughout the state in regards to tournaments and regional play coming from those neighborhoods. So, those are the biggies there. Beyond that, the next biggie is the Boys and Girls Club expansion project itself, which is rather amazing and exciting. I can't thank Ryan enough for his efforts with the Development Block Grant applications. And then, also Gerald Sostak over at the Boys and Girls Club for all of his fundraising efforts going on there as well, too. Another great demonstration of partnership for the department as the town overall. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Laura, you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I want to make sure you know about this. First of all, I want to compliment Jason on his performance on Arbor Day. It was so incredible. And if you haven't already been told... And if you haven't already been told, a young woman absolutely confounded him. A mic drop moment. And so I want you to ask him about that. I don't want to tell you about it. I want you to ask him. But he had those children's full attention. That's the hardest thing in the whole world. So I just wanted to publicly comment how fortunate we are to have Jason.
Agreed.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Mike?
Yeah, I was just interested, you went so quick through that list of things to do. I was interested in the master plan. You mentioned that we're kind of doing, we're halfway or in a phased position this next fiscal year to start that at 60,000.
Correct. What we're going to be doing is really looking at it in a phased process solely as it relates to fiscal years. So we're going to split that project from a fiscal standpoint over the course of two fiscal years. This will be part one of that. Other than that, the project will be a continuous or seamless project in whole. And so that will be one of those initial things we'll be working on is the development for requests for proposals and qualifications. That will springboard then the process and we'll get started, but it'll be timed lined based upon a two fiscal year process.
So we're anticipating a budget of about 120,000?
Hundred, hundred.
Yeah.
Somewhere right in those numbers. Yeah.
Wonderful. So when will you kick off your RFP?
That RFP will basically will, after presentations tonight and further feedback that we may receive from, from you all as well as the town manager, we'll start putting some ink to paper and developing those processes so that we're ready to go from those trigger moments and then hitting the expected timetables.
Yeah, great. Wonderful. Good to hear.
Any other questions, anyone? Larry, you got a comment? No? Brian? Jody has a question, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment, if I may. I know that you and your team have been working really hard on multiple events with the 40th anniversary. Please, no, it is appreciated.
Oh, sure. Without a doubt. Nope. We appreciate your support and we're going to have a lot of fun coming, well, shoot, here just in a couple of weeks and it's going to continue all the way through, so.
Yes, and you know, I saw Jean Lupa the other night and she said, "Am I still, do I still get to be Rose Marie for the Hollywood Squares?" And yes, I said, "Yes, I have a bow for you."
Good deal.
Any other questions? Anything else, Brian?
No, sir, I'm.
One suggestion, stay out of trouble.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
At least I'm going to be very restricted for the next three to four weeks, so.
Good, thank you, Brian. Good job.
Yeah, thank you for going above and beyond and coming out tonight.
No problem. I was losing too much money to the dog in her poker games at home, so this was a good little respite here. Thank you.
We'll go on to the next one, which is D. Can you believe it's legal, page 6115?
Can you believe it's legal?
Ivan, you are up.
Yeah. You know, year after year, I keep thinking, what can we talk about that's new and interesting about the legal budget?
We think the same thing.
The only thing that's ever interesting is when, as this year, the amount that we budget for outside council, which of course, we kind of just have to pick an amount and hope that it's enough, this year we did overspend it. And that was because of the event center bankruptcy. And so, right now, we're having to kind of fool the computer and have the computer keep letting us pay bills because it keeps saying, "You've overspent, you've overspent," you know, bong, 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 and it won't, it doesn't like it. And Bill doesn't like it either, you know. Bill likes to come, but I think he kind of takes some joy whenever we do that because we eventually have to, you know, get a transfer and, and he gets to say, "Ah, see, the legal department had to have a transfer in order to finish out their budget." This year, the amount is the same. You know, we put in about 105,000 for outside council. Everything else is exactly the same except for salaries, I think. They, they're a little bit higher. We still pay Carol using a contract and just talked with her on Spark today and had some good discussions with her. You know, here she is in, on the East Coast, just a few miles away from the Atlantic Ocean. And we're able to pull it up and there she is and we sit and talk and talk about documents and work through issues. And I'm just amazed that technology allows us to do those things and that we can continue to use all the background and experience that she has. And then she sends us a document by email and there it is. You know, we've got it. It's pretty amazing stuff. I was on the phone just this afternoon with our outside counsel for this building and we were getting ready for the mediation that we hope to have in early June. And, you know, dealing with all of the issues, we had given him 51,000 documents to prepare for the mediation. And we still haven't given him all the documents that we have. And now we've got to go through them and get some idea as to what we'll disclose prior to mediation. And they probably don't have quite as many as we do, but they probably have tens of thousands to share with us. And you keep hoping that you can get the other side to finally just settle down and say, "Are we really going to go through this process step by step by step as you always do in litigation?" But for the moment, they haven't quite gotten out of that mode, so we get to keep playing that game. Let me just talk about people. You know, we're all getting older in the legal department. Yeah. Steven is our youngest, you know, person over there and we, I'm, I'm ancient and it's...
Babe.
Yeah, just a babe.
They don't cry.
Feeble, that's what Larry says, feeble. And, you know, we, we have a, a great group of people there, as you know. And I keep praying that year after year, Bob will keep coming to work every day and being a great prosecutor and Steven will, will keep coming. And you know, you know Steven, you can't pass his door without talking to him. And, and, you know, I'm so grateful that very few people poke their head in my place because they'll catch me sleeping if they do, you know. But.
Thank you.
We, of course, Cindy and Irma and, and Bob altogether just keep that criminal side just humming and really enjoy that. Anyway, good folks.
Any question, Mary?
No, I just have to say something to your comment. So I, whenever I go down that area, I always do stop and say hi to you. And the one thing I've noticed is that I remember your office had lots of boxes and lots of papers. And it's spotless. It's beautiful. And then you go over to Steven's office and his office has all of the boxes and all the papers. So it's pretty funny, that transition.
It is, it is.
And of course, his is pretty small, his office, you know what I mean? So it's just little path, but.
Well, you know, if he didn't have so much food in there, he would have.
Yeah, there, yeah, I did see that too, yeah. And, and if you can't keep it in his office, he'll put it out there on that metal cabinet area.
That's exactly right.
Right?
How does he do it? I don't know how he does.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the other day.
Oh, you're back.
Just keep up, Ivan, you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no more comments, we'll move on then to number E. Please, page 6-163. Chief, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't know if you've been told, but we all had to keep our budgets flat this year. But we have no budget. Larry took my money, so, that's it.
Are you getting a parking lot?
We are.
No parking lot?
We're getting a parking lot, yes. Yeah, I'm kidding. So we, the problem with the police department was this year, we had a lot of mandatory increases to our operating budget that were beyond our control. For example, our dispatch, everybody knows, as one of the capital expenses that we've had was $260,000 this year, and I think it'll be the same next year if I'm not mistaken. But that's for the new computer aided dispatch and records management system that we had to go to because Prescott decided they wanted to go to it. Well, along with that goes increased maintenance fees, so that increased $67,000, a little bit over. Also, everybody is looking at our beautiful building that's going up over there and I can't wait until it's done. But when it's finished, it's going to have to be cleaned and maintained and that's going to result in about a $10,500 increase in our maintenance costs. We had some other software issue, maintenance costs of about $7,000. And we have about $31,000 anticipated for TASER replacement. So total in pretty much uncontrolled cost increases was about 115,000, a little bit over. So what we did was we went into our, our flat operating budget and we had to start making some cuts and we did. We looked at our fuel savings, our fuel budgets and did a historical analysis. We were able to reduce that by 20,000, a little over 20,000 dollars. And I just want to ensure everybody in the, in the public, we're not going to be running out of gas when we're coming to your house. I, I promise you that. It was money that we've looked at historically, so we felt comfortable in doing that. We, there's a couple of other areas that we looked at, but we took $10,000 out of our, our TASER replacements. And then we took $20,000 out of our dispatch contingency money. We're hopeful that we don't need that and if we did, then we hope to make it up in other cost savings throughout the year. We did manage to twist Larry's arm and pick Bill's pocket and get some capital money. And so we're going to be getting three patrol cars, one canine, 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 the dog, one canine vehicle, a SWAT throw phone. And if anybody wants to know what that is, it's when we are involved in a barricaded subject situation, we throw them this phone. It's very rugged, it's got a long cord on it. And then we try to open a, a line of communication with them. And we have one, but it's really old and when we throw it, it breaks and doesn't work very well anymore. So we had to replace that. And then an animal control vehicle. So the total for our capital this year was about 302,000. That's like vehicles and stuff. We also had technology capital. So as I said before, the CAD and RMS upgrade was about 260,000. Our mobile data units and our patrol cars, 32,000. Radio repeater system, 30,000. We continue to have problems with that and we continue to make patches and fixes and we're hoping we're narrowing it down. And then our, we had to get a new copier for our records because obviously they use it a lot. So the, the capital and technology was about 329,000. And then construction wise, we are getting our parking lot for about 72,000 and then some silicone and other replacements on our north and south parking lot decks for a total of about 93,000. So I will say, and I, and I want, and I think you all know, but I want the, the public to know, whoever's watching tonight, that even in the challenging times that we have right now, Prescott Valley was named the safest city in northern Arizona and the 10th safest city in all of the state. So your police officers and your police department, both civilian and sworn, are really doing just a super job in making sure that this community stays safe. And I think we, we owe them a great deal of gratitude. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions, anyone? Laura?
Chief, for the, for the citizens that are watching us, one of your accomplishments was coordinated 55 community outreach events. Just give them in the name of a couple so that they'll understand what, what that means.
Okay, so we have a lot, 55. But we do coffee with a cup every month. We've done two citizens academies. We are in the process of developing a youth academy that we hope to get going in the summer. We do the Bridge of the Community every spring. That'll be coming up probably May or June. And then May 24th, we're doing our Latino Town Hall event. We do, we have expanded our block watch programs. We try to get into our business watch programs and into the business community. There's other areas of community outreach, I'll be honest with you, that I am equally, if not more proud of, and I think I've, I've talked to some of you about it. One of those is about a year ago, I asked our officers to, to start getting out into the community. And so we, we came up with a program, we call it the Meaningful Contacts Program. And it has been just a rousing success. What we ask our officers to do is go out, just find somebody, strike up a random conversation because I have found that either A, people who have had exposure or interaction with law enforcement in the past, it may not have been very positive, or B, this is their first exposure to law enforcement. And we want to either change that initial paradigm or create a real positive one for us and for the profession. So we've had a couple of really good ones. We've had, I don't know if anybody saw in the paper about a week ago, Justin Scarborough, one of our officers, was with a four-year-old that they had found walking down, I think it was Windsong. Ultimately, unfortunately, led to the arrest of the parents because they had just neglected him and let him wander away. We had another one recently where we were dispatched to the area behind Denny's on a disorderly male who was yelling and screaming at people. And we found a 92-year-old male in a park bench. The officer sat down and determined that he was early onset dementia, had walked away from his apartment. And so after he talked to him for a while, determined that he hadn't eaten for a while. So he took him back to his apartment, but before he did, he drove through the drive-thru of the Burger King, got him some, something to eat, then took him back to the apartment, called for Adult Protective Services, and then they came out to check on him and make sure that he was okay. And then one of the other ones I really liked, which goes to the first point that I made, which is, we had an officer contacted a gentleman at the Circle K and he was homeless. But he was homeless by choice. He had income, but he just chose to, to live off the land. And so the officer approached him and he was very resistant to this because his experiences with law enforcement was not positive. But the officer persisted and he kept going and he kept trying and he kept going. And he finally broke down some barriers and they had a great conversation. And, and the gentleman later said that he was most impressed because the officer introduced himself by his first name, not by officer. And so we, we have, I don't know, countless examples of the success of that program. I'll be honest with you, that program does not count into that 55, but it's probably one of the most important community outreaches that we have done by far.
Thank you. Then the question I have, when the building is done, will we bring the evidence storage into that building or will we always be off-site?
We'll always be off-site. The, the space in that is just not adequate.
Any other questions? Rick?
Chief, this past year, you've changed the false alarm codes and how you respond to them. Could you give us an update quickly about how that's going?
Yeah, I had that information, I presented it recent, oh, I think I presented it the, the breakfast for the chamber recently. But, so if you looked at a year ago, not January of 18, but 17, we had like 88 calls for service for alarms. We went out on all 88 of them. This past January, we had like 57, I think it was, or something like that. Nine of those would have been verified. I think we went out on seven. And two of those, we shouldn't have gone out on, but there was a miscommunication and we ended up going. The other ones were either panic alarm or another activation that requires manual manipulation of a button or something like that. So it has been a tremendous decrease in, in the, I'm sorry, but the waste of our resources going out on alarms that were 99.2% false when we went out on them. So that has been a success and we haven't had any, any problems.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, that was one of my questions, so that's good to hear. We're seeing a positive result.
Absolutely.
And using our resources in a little more efficient way. The other thing I had was, you mentioned the communication. I guess that's because I always see these little notations regarding Niles. Is that our communication?
Correct.
What, what is the issue still with that, that we're trying to resolve?
Where do I begin? Yeah. It's an old system to begin with. We've been trying to keep up with it over the years. Part of the problem is communication isn't originating in Prescott Valley for Prescott Valley. Communication is originating in Prescott, coming across the mountain to us and then going back. There's a lot of dead spots throughout the city depending on terrain and buildings and so forth. And so we've had a real problem with that. We've also had a problem with equipment breaking. And sometimes when it breaks, there's no redundancy in place. And I, I don't remember what day it was, but recently there was an entire afternoon, I think it was on a Sunday, we lost all communications. We, we had none. And so if they didn't call in on their cell phones or, or something like that, there was nothing going on. So it is something that we're aware of. We're trying to work through them. We, we actually got some grant money. We identified one problem. We identified one problem that was questionable as to whose responsibility it was, but we negotiated with Prescott and they split the cost with us, which was really very nice of them and we appreciated that cooperation.
Well, see, that's what I'm wondering. How do you determine whether it's, you know, their problem, our problem, or something we work together on?
As you can imagine, when you have different people responsible for different things, it's the blame game. It's not my problem, it's Niles' problem. Niles gets there and says, well, it's not Niles' problem, it's Prescott's problem. Or it's our problem, or whatever. And so we keep, we play that merry-go-round from time to time. But I, I will say by and large, Niles has been very responsive to what we're asking for, and so has Prescott.
And that's a local company?
Yeah, oh, actually, they're out of Flagstaff.
Flagstaff, okay.
Yeah, but they got the contract years ago. I don't know when the last time we went out to, to bid for something like that, but they're very familiar with the system. They've been maintaining it for a long time, so.
So that's the contract we have with Niles?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. So that may be something in the future we'll, we'll look at again, I assume. I don't know, but it sounds like an issue that, you know, is recurring, so it's something we need to address.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
But any other comments?
I want to wish you good luck with Badges and Bobbers, which is coming up really soon. I'm so excited that you're.
Saturday, 10 to 2.
Yes.
Have them kids.
Where?
We've got 500 fishing poles, so we hope to fill them all. Larry said he's going to take two.
Where should the, where should the family and the children show up?
Fane Lake.
Thank you.
Good, any other?
But don't show up at Fane Lake on, is it Friday? Tomorrow, starting at noon. It will be closed.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
You've done a good job.
Good night.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, now we'll move on to debt service. Page 83. Bill, you are up. Break out the pillows, did you say that?
Yes.
Yep, well, that's normal.
What else?
Let's go ahead and hit this real quick. I do want to point out that one thing that Ivan did forget to mention, that in our, we meet with the department ads all the time and go over their, their staffing or all their requests for their budget. So this year, first time in 16 years that I've been doing this, Ivan does not show up.
Oh, no.
So, but because he puts in so much detail into his budget, it's almost like, like his resolutions he writes. It's so detailed. Steven was able to sit in and just kind of read through the detail and give us a full explanation as to what his budget entails. So Ivan never did show up for the budget meeting at all. And I thought he should mention that, or he forgot to mention.
So Steven mimicked Ivan?
Steven tried to, but it was very, very difficult to do that, so. But anyway, so just thought he should have mentioned that.
That's good or bad? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're not sure yet either, so. On page, or chapter eight, page two, I'm just going to hit just the highlights. This right here shows our existing outstanding debt to date. As you can see, this is the beginning, principal balance, it's principal only. It's 42,529,000 of outstanding debt at this point. We're going to be issuing bonds, 4.5 million. I'm not sure, as we get closer to date, I'm not sure that that's going to be sufficient. It was an estimate at the time we started the budget process, but I'm just not 100% sure. When it's all said and done, adding all these attorney costs and everything else on top of it, I think we're going to be, we might be in excess of 4.5 million. We are trying to, we did actually, I'll hit here in a second, but we do have actually proposed or estimated debt service payment, like I said last night. We won't really know for sure until the end of July, what that true debt service payments for the building next door are going to be. So I don't know if you have any questions regarding the information on, on page two, chapter eight. And then the other thing I just want to go over briefly is on page four and five and six, this is a list of all of our outstanding, just the governmental debt. We, the enterprise, any debt related to the enterprise are recorded in enterprise funds. So this kind of gives you just the detail, the history of our debt service payments on these various refunding. We have, we, we have basically almost all of our bonds have been refunded. So right now, you're, you look at it, you'll just, for the most part, you'll have no idea what each of these debt service payments are for unless you just ask us and we'll have to explain them to you. But, you know, it's, we've, we've received lower interest rates over the years, so we always have to go out and refund them, so. But this is just the his, history of our debt service payments. You see the police building, that's a new one. It's not even fully constructed, but we're making debt service payments. And then the college on the bottom of 8-5, that one right there is an estimate. We're not sure exactly what that is. And then the certificates, this is the last payment on this certificate of participation for the library building. Then we're going to go to refunding, so. With that, I'll answer any questions on debt service.
Questions, anyone? Your question, Marty? Anyone else? Bill, I think it's just as clear as, I won't say it.
Got it.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, I think I'll do it, except we have one more to go on, Bill, and that's number G. Community Facilities District, that's, I won't go through each one of them, look on the green, green tabs on your book.
The Entertainment District is actually a separate handout. We just finished that this afternoon, so everyone should have the separate handout for the Entertainment District. This one is still, well, I do want to point out that if you notice, there is no Eastridge. Eastridge is done.
Yay!
So we are fine, we are finished with Eastridge, so we will not be going, having any more budgets related to that. We are going to be hopefully paying everything out, finalizing everything by the end of June. So we're, we have one more debt service payment that we make a transfer at the end of June. Payment is made July 1, but then then everything, any remaining reserve money that was left over, we're going to be sending it back out to the property owners. So they're going to see a nice little surprise here at the end of June, so. But anyway, so I'll go with the Entertainment District Center, CFD. We just received these numbers. We met with them on Monday. We're still in the process, these are just estimates at this point. After me and Larry met with the event, the manager at the event center, we tried to tell them to kind of see if he can shave off a little bit more money. Because right now, we're showing a $750,000 shortfall between operating revenues and operating related expenses. So we, we're trying to get that below 700, actually Larry said 600. When he, when he left, I go, there's, thinking there's, not going to happen, I'm pretty sure. First year, a full year of operation, trying to cut 150,000, it was, was a little bit much, so. I don't know if the final number has been paid yet.
We're very close to 700. And just, you'll know that our goal and also the projections when we were looking to pull that out of bankruptcy was it was going to take three years to get rid of the red ink. And so we're working that direction.
So if you look at the revenue side, facility revenues, again, are all the revenues that they have generated, that they're going to be generating within the facility. The contributions, that's, that's coming from the town. That's the amount of money that the town will be contributing at this point to the event center, not only to cover the shortfall of the operation of the building, but also any of the items listed in the lower part of the expenditures. We have debt service payments that are coming from, that we use to pay for this money, insurance, and then if there's a management and incentive fee, that's based on, depending on how much revenues this, this, the center generates above a benchmark. So if they hit certain plateaus, then we have to pay them so much money. This is the maximum amount, so we'll see. We'll see what happens in the next year. So, and then the 940, that's an estimate right now, that's the remaining bonds that we issued earlier this year. So this is what we think is going to be left over and carried forward to next year. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anyone?
Number one, I want to say, I loved seeing the trees and the shrubs planted today. Visually already without any growth. And I always see that as an economic development issue. If it looks attractive and pleasing, people want to go there. I, I don't know if this is a question or a statement, but it appears how busy they become, that we're doing well. Now, we, like Larry said, it's going to take us three years, it's our projections, but I'm feeling extremely positive and I don't want to hear that I don't have reasons to feel that way.
I'm not going to say it. Not coming from me.
Mary?
Well, you know, I just, I just wanted to make a note and also just make sure that I have a good understanding, but as you noted on the contributions of the town and what we're putting in, I'd just like to make a note about that. We are putting in money, but prior to owning this building, we were putting in money also, and we were going nowhere with that. So we have taken this money that we were putting in, basically in a black hole to a point where we're going to turn this thing around, and it's going to be a great place for this town. And I just really want to come out and say that so people understand what our relationship had prior, before we purchased this building, and how much more that we're going to do with it and the investment that we are going to make and go forward, so.
The important thing is we're putting in less today than what we did under the old agreement. And we have the ownership and control interest. That's the important thing.
That's right.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Bill, keep getting those debts and, debt service paid down.
Working on it.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, next one?
Parkway?
Yes.
Just a couple of comments. The, I guess first of all, the property tax or the assessed value of the district, you can see in the very last line on page one, is 1,495,000. Last year was 1,462,000. So it went up 2, 2.2%. So at least it's going in the right direction. Nothing like the residential CFDs, but at least it's going in the right direction. As a result, and this is, there's another reason for this, but we also, the debt or the tax rate is $12.74 per $100 secondary assessed value. Last year was 13.94. So it's a 8.6% decrease. So I think most of the property owners over there will see a decrease, even though that really doesn't make them that much happier, since every year I do hear from them and they still say that they're paying way too much money for commercial property, that's for sure. But at least it's going down. In the past, I'm sure you all remember, we were almost $19, $20, we were well over, you know, significantly more. Now, part of the other reason why it's going down, other than the assessed value, is the contribution line in revenues. That's from three sources. One is a $50,000 contribution from the general fund that we're still making. The church is contributing $18,000 and Stepping Stones is contributing 12,000. So of those three items equals the $80,000. So with that all, and debt service is pretty much a level of debt service year after year. With that, I'll answer any questions.
And if, if I could, the contribution by the church, the contribution by Stepping Stones, they don't have to do that. They could hide behind their tax status like a school that we continuously have difficulties with. And I will not mention them by name, but if they were watching, I hope they feel guilty. Because they have pushed their burden for improvements that they use every day onto everybody else that is in that facilities district, and it's just flat wrong.
Totally agree.
Thank you, Larry. Next one, Bill?
Prowl Horn. Also, it's right now, the secondary assessed value this year went, is up, it's up 18,999,000, up from 16.9 last year. So it's up 12.4%. The rate that we're proposing for the next fiscal year is $2.67 compared to 2.81 last year. So it is a 5% decrease. Now, I've not received the, every year I get the detailed property assessed values for each property owner within the districts. I've not received that yet. Most of this contribute, or most of this increase in the assessed value is due to new homes. But I won't know that for a fact until I actually see the detail. Last year, every resident within that, in all the residential CFDs, had a 5% increase. So we're, I'm assuming that there's going to be another 5% increase this year. So we're trying to lower the tax rate by 5% so that existing residential homeowners will not see any increase in their tax rate, or in their taxes, tax bill. So that's the goal. The other thing I do want to point out, the successor in interest charge, again, that's based on new homes being built. So as long as housing continues to improve and increase, depending on which, you know, Kool-Aid you want to drink, but, you know, we're, we're in a, I did up it this year, actually. It wasn't based on anything Richard said, but I did increase it. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to recall, I think they're, they're close to build out in a year or two.
I'm, I'm not 100% sure how many, they opened up the next phase.
I'm just trying to remember what Richard was telling us at one time, so.
In Prowl Horn, I thought there was another couple of phases opened.
Well, there, there's several more phases, but they're fairly large lot. If they continue with the takedown, that they, or the absorption that they're presently at in 24 months, that project should be close to finish.
And that is, well, the point, then I would like to also point out with that is that then that dollar amount will go away.
Right.
And then as a result, that's one revenue stream that'll go away. And that'll have a direct impact on the tax rates. So we are trying to build up cash reserves to try to soften that blow when that day does happen. Some of the residents, when we were going out in our budget meetings, most of them came up to us and complained about that. And I tried to explain, especially in Prowl Horn and Quailwood, that that is really one of the reasons why we're trying to build up reserves, because you have a, a revenue stream that is eventually going to go away. So they didn't like it, though. They still didn't like it.
Any other questions? How about Quailwood?
Quailwood, assessed value is a little over $14.5 million. Last year was 12.4, so it went up by 17.6%. That one is, I mean, that one lost the most during the downturnary recession. I mean, they were down 20, 25%. It seemed like a year, every year it was going down, double digits, big time. So now they're going back up, catching up again. Their tax rate for next year being proposed is $2.98. Last year was $3.13. So they're just shy of 5% decrease. So some people, again, if they see a 5% increase in their assessed value, tax rate goes down by 4.8, they are going to most likely see a few dollar increase in their tax bill. This one right here has a developer contribution. At some point, that one's going to, they're, they're going to stop paying us, basically, stop paying the district. Whatever they reach, they have a couple of goals or benchmarks, and once they're, once they reach those, then their contribution is, goes away. Right now, I'm still proposing or budgeting a $50,000 contribution from them. I won't know until June, how many homes, basically, how many homes door and sells, then that basically relieves them of the debt. I don't know how many homes they sold this year, so, and how many they have left. So we'll find out at the end of June how close this number really is.
Good. Any other?
So with that, I'll, any questions?
Questions or comments? Move on then to Raven Ridge?
I don't really have anything really to mention Raven Ridge is, I don't know, there's like four or five people left in that. I mean, it just won't pay it off, so. And well, it's still, it's going to last for another. And well, it's still, it's going to last for another eight years or something like that, but we have like a handful of people that are still paying their annual assessments. So I'm hoping, waiting for them to sell their house, and then their assessment will be paid off, and then we can finalize this one, too. So I have no other comments.
No other comments, no other questions? Let's move on then to South Side.
I think everyone pretty, pretty much is familiar with South Side. I don't think we have to talk too much about South Side. This is, the budget is based on if we had 100% participation of property owners, and we don't. We do have one that's still, every year we go through an auction, and no one shows up to buy this piece of property, so... So it's the town, if no one, you know, we go, we go out, ask for, you know, we try to collect the money, money is not received, when a debt service is due, the town will advance money to the CFD to make that payment. At some point, you know, that property is sold, the town then will receive and get their money back. But it's going on quite a few years at this point. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Now, let's move on to Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge, last one. Assessed value, $25,744 compared to $23,700 last year. So it's an 8.3% increase. You know, again, I don't have the detail. We're, we're assuming a 5% decrease or increase in assessed value. Out there, though, it is a little bit different, just because of the, all the different types of homes that are out there. Some are 5%, some are more, some are less. It's not typically the straight across like some of the other, like Quailwood and Prowhorn. So we are proposing a rate of $2.43. Last year was $2.59, so the decrease is a little over 6%. So I'm, I'm pretty sure most of the existing property owners out there will see a decrease in the taxes. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just, I remember when we had our budget thing over there, and there was some concern, and I wasn't sure in terms of the reserves, we're setting aside some reserves for Stone Ridge.
Yeah, we're, we're still trying to set reserves aside. You know, we're, we're trying to set a dollar amount each, each of the CFDs, residential CFDs, we have kind of a little bit of different amount. But I would like to at least, and we're, we're still not there, but I'd like to at least have, you know, one debt service payment. But it's still, that's quite a bit of money to build up to that reserve. So we are, last year, actually, I used, I didn't use any money. This year, I am using a little bit of our accumulated cash balance to bring that rate down a little bit. But we, we still have a decent amount, so just as long as everyone pays their property taxes, we'll be, we'll be good.
Yes, we will. Thank you. Any other questions?
Before we adjourn, I want to thank Larry. Last night, I told him I couldn't stand the wires tangling up in my feet. And he immediately made it all nice. Thank you, I did not get tangled up in any wires tonight under the table here.
Anyone else get tangled up? Any other comments? If, thank you, Bill. Good job. With that, meeting is adjourned.